Good evening. It is my pleasure to welcome you to the Lexington County District Board of Trustees' regular monthly meeting. It is Tuesday, December the ninth, twenty twenty five, six o'clock. We are meeting in the Staff Development Room of the Lexington Three District Office. All board members are present except Dr. Gunner. I welcome you all and thank you for attending. At this time, I call our meeting to order. I would like to recognize two students who attend Batesburg-Lesville Primary School. Jacary Lee Part will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and Grady Barton will lead us in prayer. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, honor God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Dear Jesus, thank you for this day. Please help everyone tonight to make good decisions for school. Amen.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your participation in our meeting. At this point, we are on item one point four, approval of agenda. You receive the agenda in your packet. Without objection, we will approve the agenda as presented. The agenda is approved. Item one point five, approval of minutes for November eleventh, twenty twenty five, regular board meeting. These minutes were also in your packet. Without objection, we will approve the minutes as presented. The minutes for November the eleventh, twenty twenty five, regular board meeting are approved. Now, one point six, election of Board of Trustees officers. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we continue with the current officers for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year, which would be Frances Bautnig as chair, Dr. Gary Ann Gunner as vice chair, and Sonia Carey as secretary.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Burgess and a second from Mr. Kaufman to continue with the current officers. Frances Bautnig as board chair, Dr. Gary Ann Gunter as board vice chair, and Sonia Carey as secretary for next year. Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is to approve the nominations of Frances Bautnig as board chair, Dr. Gary Ann Gunner as board vice chair, and Sonia Carey as secretary. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will move on to two point zero, recognition. Presentation to Board of Trustees by Mr. Sam Aswell, Batesburg-Lesville High School Ag teacher.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Perrier and I'm proud to represent the Batesburg-Lesville FFA chapter. On behalf of our agriculture students, thank you for your continued support of our program. Because of your commitment, we have opportunities to learn real world skills, compete in FFA competitions, and work with equipment and projects that prepare us for our future careers. Your support makes a real difference in our lives every day. Tonight, our FFA members would like to present each of you with a wreath handmade by our students. These represent our appreciation and the pride we take in our work, work that is possible because of you. Thank you again for investing in agricultural education and in us as students. We truly appreciate everything you do. Thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you so much.
That is beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
And thank you for sharing that information with us. And on behalf of the board, we thank you. And thank you also, Mr. Aswell.
Thank you so much.
Merry Christmas to you all.
Merry Christmas.
Now, we will move on to three point zero, consent. Item three point one, financial report by Mrs. Roden.
Good evening. The items were in your packet for the finances for the month of November. The noteworthy items is the strategic compensation grants. That's the money we received for the teachers that we recognized at last month's meeting for meeting their goals. And then, since the government opened back up, we got our JROTC funds. So we're showing two months worth of payments there. Typically, in December, we have our auditor come and present the audit. But due to the shutdown, the federal guidelines weren't approved. But now they have been approved and our audit is due to the State Department, January ninth. I mean, we submitted it December first, but the final is due January ninth. So we hope to have them come and present in January. I'm not sure if it's going to conflict with the schedule or not. But we did get an unmodified opinion, so that's good. But we'll get that out to you after it's finalized. Do you have any questions about the statements you received in your packet? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, item three point two, superintendent's report by Dr. Atkinson.
Thank you. I have several items I want to highlight from the previous month. First of all, I want to start with our primary and elementary school students. We had numerous students from these schools that participated in the Governor's Care lighting ceremony on Sunday, November the twenty third. So they all met up on the front lawn of the South Carolina State House and joined students from across the state and sang a number of festive Christmas songs and listened to Governor McMaster speak. And then they got to participate in the lighting of the official state Christmas tree for the entire season. So I just want to thank our music teacher Kendall Reese, who has been working on our students for several months to prepare them. And our very own Prince, Ms. Mary Ann Tillman, who has been directing the children's choir for some years now. So congratulations to these students and staff that they well represented our district at this event. Continuing with the primary school, our first and second grade Montessori performed their musical performance of Children of the World on Thursday, November the thirtieth. And they did an amazing job and actually sang some of the songs in another language. Continuing with other events, our Lexington County Soil and Water Conservation District planted an oak tree on the middle school grounds in honor of our South Carolina teacher, Corey Beetbow, on Thursday, December the fourth. Our middle school held their first ever day of service on Monday, November the twenty fourth, where our students were able to volunteer and serve the community in lots of different activities. So again, it's a good character building activity for our students to learn to serve others. Our elementary school students were rewarded for their great behavior in their annual Turkey Trot on Monday, November the twenty fourth. This is part of our PBIS rewards for good behavior that we expect every day. The students had a great time playing different sports and participating in other activities. Nicole Gorski coordinates the PBIS program at the elementary school and does an excellent job with that. We had one basketball player, Tomasz Gillum, who was recently named as one of the top five two-way basketball players in the state for this year by the South Carolina Basketball Coaches Association. Our middle school and high school students have been collecting donations for a joint food drive for some time. And on Friday, November the twenty first, our middle school students helped pass out all these fixings to go along with over a hundred families Thanksgiving meals. We had lots of partners in this. Several of our churches helped out with this food drive and being able to distribute this food. Christ Community Church, Batesburg-Lesville Presbyterian, Mount Aura, Samaria, First Baptist Church of Batesburg, and Stedman Baptist all helped in this endeavor as well. Our high school chorus performed for members of our local Chamber of Commerce at their monthly Shealy's Breakfast Meeting on Thursday, December the fourth. Elementary school staff participated in the neighborhood Christmas caroling on December the fourth as well. And our Batesburg-Lesville Police Department hosted fifteen of our students for their Shop with a Cop event on last Saturday, December the sixth. We had two high school student athletes sign national letters of intent Wednesday, November the nineteenth. Preston Smith signed with Erskine to play football. Brayden Hallman signed with Virginia Commonwealth University to play baseball for next year. Our child nutrition department celebrated with Big Thursday event on Thursday, November the twentieth. It was a dress in your favorite team day and then get to enjoy a great lunch that's always provided by our outstanding cafeteria staff. A couple of things that are going on now, our middle school Beta Club is currently hosting a nursing home blanket drive now through January the thirteenth. You could drop off blankets at the middle school or also you can drop them off at Steam and Barrel. Our high school FFA, as you just saw, they are selling Christmas wreaths now through next Friday, December the nineteenth. And our high school construction class are selling Adirondack chairs as well if you're interested. Our middle school, in their inaugural year of robotics team, competed in Simpsonville on Saturday, November the fifteenth. And we had two teams, one placed seventh overall and one placed sixth. Again, to my knowledge, this is their first competition. So we're proud of our robotics team that are just getting started at the middle school. Few things that will be occurring in the next week or so. We have four different Christmas programs that will be coming really quickly. Our third grade Christmas program will be tomorrow at six thirty in the Fine Arts Center. Our middle school chorus concert will be this Thursday at seven PM in the Fine Arts Center. We will have a high school combined chorus and band concert on Monday, December the fifteenth at seven in the Fine Arts Center. And the last Christmas program will be the middle school band will have a concert on Tuesday, December the sixteenth at seven. Tomorrow, our elementary school will be hosting their annual candlelight lunch. Our Lexington Three mentoring program Santa Claus event will be this Sunday, December the fourteenth at two PM at St. John's Methodist Church. The primary school will be having their steam day on Wednesday, December seventeenth. Middle school avid day will be Wednesday, December the seventeenth, from eight thirty to twelve. And the yearly primary school four K box parade will be on Wednesday, December the seventeenth. I hope all our parents are getting all those boxes ready for the four years. And then, what a lot of our staff and every one of our students are looking forward to is December the nineteenth will be the end of the second nine weeks and the end of the fall semester. And just as a reminder, December the nineteenth will be a half day for students. Teachers will return from Christmas break on January the fifth on a Monday and our students on January sixth for the start of spring semester. In conclusion, I just want to say, offer my thanks and gratitude for all of our administration team that are here today. They have really worked really hard for us to have a great semester. And because of their hard work and dedication, this has been a great first half of our year. It's ran really smoothly and again, it couldn't be happier. Seems like we just started yesterday in August. So it's been that kind of a year, it's been a great year. That's all I have for tonight and Merry Christmas.
Thank you so much, Dr. Atkinson. Next, four point zero, public participation. Do we have any cards, Mrs. Deric? Thank you. Next on the agenda is five point zero, information items. Item five point one, school board member continuing education. Debriefing the twenty twenty five SCSBA Legislative Advocacy Conference and Delegate Assembly by the Board of Trustees.
During our presentations, several different organizations presented to us what their legislative goals were for the year. And the South Carolina Education Association presented and the Palmetto State Teachers Association presented. And SCEA plans to emphasize respecting educators as professionals. Their topics would be providing competitive compensation, increasing unencumbered time, reducing paperwork, produce a fair and equitable contract, improve educator recruitment and retention, trust educators as education experts, and provide comprehensive benefits. Another heading would be providing an education of excellence and increasing learning time, investing in student educator wellness, school safety, and early childhood literacy. And supporting our public schools was their third headline. By prioritizing the classroom and fund the outcome, and that's vocational ed and dual credit courses. And then there's a huge push right now for tax abatement reduction. The top four focus priorities of Palmetto State Teachers Association is persistently disruptive, dangerous, and student behaviors, compensation for teachers, protecting educator time, and safety and security for our schools and our students.
I always enjoy the legislative roundtable because you hear what the legislators think are going to be hot topics and things coming up. And the one thing that I thought was impressive was Shane Martin said to him the hot topic was going to be the governor's race. Because he said, when you think about the governor, he said, that's the leader of your ship. That handles your education, that handles your law enforcement, resource officers. And he said, I just hope everybody takes it seriously. And that you go out and vote and select somebody on merit and not because somebody has a lot of money, enough to raise ads and have their face out in the public. But he just felt like the hot topic next year would be the governor race.
Anyone else? I represented our board at the Delegate Assembly, the association's annual business meeting. We elected SCSBA's leadership of officers and directors. They were installed near the end of the assembly. Also, we adopted the association's twenty twenty six legislative resolutions. After much discussion on many of the resolutions, we adopted thirty two resolutions. Some of the current legislative resolutions adopted include full funding of education mandates, public school choice, school governance takeovers, and teacher salaries. Proposed new resolutions that were adopted are inclusion of employability credential courses and test and mandate for private schools. There were two proposed resolutions for deletion. However, following the motion not to delete lottery funding for K-12 and following the discussion and the voting, the decision was to keep that resolution. The other proposed resolution for deletion was adopted. The upcoming twenty twenty six legislative session will bring new challenges and opportunities for our public schools. SCSBA remains steadfast in its mission to advocate for legislative and budgetary measures that will improve outcomes for all students across the state. The next item of business is six point zero, action items. Item six point one, approval for Batesburg-Lesville High School HOSA students to attend a field trip to participate in the HOSA convention on March eleventh through thirteenth, twenty twenty six in Charleston, South Carolina, presented by Mrs. Randy Curry, Batesburg-Lesville High School Administrator.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Ms. Ashley Farmer to request permission from the board for the BLHS HOSA to attend the annual HOSA South Carolina State Spring Leadership Conference from March eleventh through thirteenth, twenty twenty six. The conference will be held in North Charleston at the Convention Center. Students will compete at the state level against other schools' HOSA organizations and will have opportunities to attend learning symposiums during the two-day conference. Our students have raised funds as a group and personally to help cover the costs of this trip. Currently, there are fifteen to twenty students interested in competing and attending the conference. Students must compete in order to attend. Last year was our first year in attendance in competition and four of the thirteen students that attended made it to the final round of competition. Our goal this year is to make it farther than last year with a win while growing in healthcare and competitive skills.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Curry?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the BLHS HOSA students to attend a field trip to participate in the HOSA convention on March the eleventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty six, in Charleston, South Carolina, as presented by the administration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Burgess and a second from Mrs. Derrick to approve the Batesburg-Lesville High School HOSA students to attend a field trip to participate in the HOSA convention on March eleventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty six, in Charleston, South Carolina, as presented by the administration. Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is to approve Batesburg-Lesville High School HOSA students to attend a field trip to participate in the HOSA convention on March eleventh through thirteenth, twenty twenty six, in Charleston, South Carolina, as presented by the administration. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you and we hope you have a great trip. I'm sure the students will do well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, item six point two, approval for the Board of Trustees to attend the COSSBA National Conference in Louisville, Kentucky on March thirteenth through fifteenth, twenty twenty six. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion for approval for the Board of Trustees to attend the COSSBA National Conference in Louisville, Kentucky on March thirteenth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion for Mrs. Derrick and a second for Mrs. Carey to approve the Board of Trustees to attend the COSSBA National Conference in Louisville, Kentucky on March thirteenth through fifteenth, twenty twenty six. Any discussion?
I'm assuming that's just approval for any and all, not necessarily. We're not approving any particular person, just that anybody on the board that wants to go will go, correct?
That is correct. But any out-of-state trip like this, we need to get the permission to do so. Any other discussion? Hearing none, the question is to approve the Board of Trustees to attend the COSSBA National Conference in Louisville, Kentucky on March thirteenth through fifteenth, twenty twenty six. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda is seven point zero, adjourn. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we adjourn.
Do I have a second? I have a motion for Mrs. Carey and a second for Ms. Etheridge to adjourn. Those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please raise your right hand. Meeting adjourned.